My name is Alice Staples. I am the Chair of the Ashland Town Library Trustees. And we are here to talk about the library bond article. So I'd like to start by reading the bond article. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $525,000 for the purchase of the former elementary school property at 41 School Street from Tri-County Community Action Program for the use of the Ashland Town Library, and to authorize the issuance of not more than $525,000 of bonds and notes in accordance with the provisions of the Municipal Finance Act, RSA Chapter 33, for that purpose. And to authorize the selectmen to issue and negotiate such bonds or notes, and to determine the rate of interest thereon, and to authorize the receipt and expenditure of any federal, state, or private funds that may become available for that purpose. Renovation and furnishing of the building will be funded by $95,000 already raised in the Ashland Library Building Capital Reserve Fund, which was established for that purpose, and over $6,000 already raised in the Ashland Town Library Building Fund. I should also introduce the other library trustees, Martin Badger and David Ruhl, and the library director, Sarah Weinberg, and representative from Tri-County CAP, Reagan Pride. I have a few things that I will pass out. We have some photographs of the interior of the old school, and also our latest design from Simon Delia Architects for the very small amount of construction that will need to be done at the old school. So I can pass those out while I'm talking. A little bit of history of the library in Ashland. Not all of you go so far back, but I know there's probably some of you that will remember some of this. The library, Ashland has had a library since 1871. So we're looking at almost 150 years. And it's been located in the Scribner Building since September 11th, 1939. It's been 80 years in that building with no appreciable expansion. The porch was renovated at some point for the children's room in 1977. The building belongs to the town. It was bequeathed by Emma Scribner for use as a community center. And at some point, the town voted to turn it into the library, to use the building for the library. And it's been there ever since. A lot of people ask us what will happen to the Scribner Building if the library moves out. And that will be up to the Scribner trustees and the town. Right now, what the Scribner Trust does is they manage funds, and they pay the heating bills for the library, and take care of any repairs that need to be done to the interior, exterior of the building. In the current library, how many of you have a library card? Okay, great, quite a few of you. So you've been in the building, and you know that it's pretty cramped. There's not a lot of room. One of the things that the library staff constantly has to do is, we call it weeding in the library business. We have to take books off the shelf to make room for new books. And it might be before those books are sort of have been used up, and they might still be popular, but people are always requesting new books. So that's one of the problems. There's not enough room for collections. And there's not enough room for programming. If any of you have ever been to a program, there's like this huge amount of furniture that has to be moved before we can move in chairs for people to sit and watch a movie, or to do crafts. In the children's room, a lot of furniture has to be moved when there's story time for the children. So lots of really spacious, space issues are a lot of the problems that we have. There's no place, you know, you go to a library, you find a book, and you want to kind of sit and look at it and read for a while. There's really no place to do that. There's a few comfy chairs, but we're right out in the middle of where all the business of the library is taking place. The accessibility issues, some of you might know about. There's no, you see the steps coming up from Main Street. So there's a lot of, we have stories of people with walkers trying to make it up those steps. And there's steps also from Pleasant Street. And then the ramp in the back, the walkway itself is pretty steep. And it's still quite a struggle for people with any kind of mobility issues. So that's one of the things that we really want to address when we move to the new building. Also, you know that parking is pretty limited by, on the street parking, on Pleasant Street and Main Street. So how will the town benefit from the new library? Again, I'm a librarian, so I have a little bit of a bias. But you can read about this in many newspapers and magazines, that libraries are part of a community's infrastructure. They're an important symbol of a town's success and sense of community. It's an educational asset for children and adults alike. It's a vital place of connection for the elderly. And we see that very much at the Ashland Town Library. The location of the school being adjacent to the current school will enable the library to better serve the children of Ashland. And moving to the old school would have the added benefit of the town reclaiming one of the historically significant landmarks for the use of the town. We have tried this when we, the first attempt, a bond issue that we brought to the town was in 2014. And at that time, the price of the building was $950,000. In 2016, we tried again. The price was $800,000. And in 2017, $625,000. So the cost of the building is $525,000. And through the generosity of the voters, we now have $100,000 in our capital reserve fund. So that's going to offset the cost at this point. When you look again at other library projects throughout the state close to us and more far afield, I just read about a library in Madberry, which has about the same population as Ashland. And very small building, it's not large, but it was, they started, you know, thinking that it was going to cost them about a million dollars, and it ended up costing them a million three. So this is such a bargain to us, to be able to get this school, which is in beautiful condition. It's been lovingly renovated. It's ADA accessible. There's an elevator. And to get it at this price, we're really getting a really good bargain here. One of the things that the trustees have done is looked at other buildings, because we get asked about other buildings. Well, why can't the library move here? Why can't the library move there? So we looked at the liquor store. We looked at St. Magnus Church. And many years ago, we looked at some of the mill buildings. The renovations to any of those would clearly be so much more than what we're looking at with the old school. I think that that is about it for my pitch. If anyone has any questions, we're happy to answer them.
Yeah, it's up to code.
It's up to code. In all ways.
Yes, could, we know who you are, but would you state your names?
Okay, Amanda Loud. What is, have you, have the library trustees calculated what the annual maintenance would be on this new building versus, you know, what it would cost to heat this new building, for example? I know that elevators and, you know, I think it's fabulous. It's ADA accessible. Elevators have within the intrinsic cost of yearly, you know, maintenance. I mean, that's very expensive to have somebody come and stick that little stamp on the certificate every year. So anyway, have you done any studies on what that would cost to, and if there would need to be any additional staff, you know, on something that big, you know, or security cameras or the like?
Right, all of those things.
I do have some information here. First, I'm going to start with the staff. We, in our current library, we always make sure that we have two people on duty at any time. It's just for the safety of patrons, safety of the staff. With the larger building, we would probably add a third person. Since we've got, the primary library program would be spread over two floors. So we're looking at probably adding a third person. Tri-County CAP did share with us all of their expenses. And it went through them and pulled out things that would be, that we would still have to carry over. It would probably be about an additional, about an additional $16,000 maintenance on that building over what we're doing now.
And that includes the additional staff, the $16,000?
The $16,000 does not include the staff. I don't have a figure on the staff. I don't know whether, David could estimate one full-time person additional?
Depends on what we're paying them.
Depends on the level. Depends on the level of qualifications and title. But for maintenance of the building, which would include heat, water, electric, elevator service, and licensing and so on, be about $16,000 extra.
Alice, I want to ask a question while I'm thinking of it, because you mentioned, and I know that you're going to get this question, that we started out at $900,000, then $800,000. And people are going to say, why don't we wait another year and the cost will come down? Given that we have a representative here from Tri-County CAP, would you please address that issue right now?
That building is wrapped into other, it's a security against other notes that Tri-County CAP currently has out. And this price is the rock bottom that we are allowed to, you know, by our lenders, if you will, that we're allowed to sell this building for.
Okay, that's what I thought. But I thought it ought to be clear to people, because they'll see, they'll see the crisis going on.
Right, right, right. Yeah, wait a couple more years, and maybe it's, you know.
Yeah, right, they'll give it to us, you know. Okay, sorry.
I have another question.
Okay.
So the cost of the building, $525,000. And so the warrant article is to see if the town would approve, basically, the VOS, bonding it, you know. So from a taxpayer's perspective, I can see that, from a taxpayer's perspective, once, you know, should, all this, if, da-da-da-da-da, if, you know, the library goes into this new building, then I can see that on, from a taxpayer's perspective, then there would be the additional costs, you know, of the person, the additional staff, plus about $16,000 to make, you know, maintenance, you know, heat and everything like that. What is going to be the cost to the taxpayers for buying the building? And how long does that stay on our tax bill?
Charlie, do you want to address that? Or, I know that there are several different options for financing.
Reagan, would you like to explain those?
The Tri-County CAP gave us four possible scenarios for financing, all of which end up basically paying the $525,000. There's not a multiple dollar figure added on to that. It ranges from 60 months at 0% interest rate, but with a balloon payment. Second option was 1.5% for 60 months, again, with a balloon payment. Third option was at 1.5% for 120 months, even payment through the period. And another option was 4% at 60 months, again, even payment. All ending with about the $525,000 total. Obviously, so they worked with their bank on, and looking at those options. Obviously, if it were to be approved by the voters, the select board has the final say on how the financing is done. They would, I would assume, look at those options, look at other options through municipal bond bank, and find the best, best possible option.
So I thought we had some annual payment options that would give, I know, give us a, translate to a tax increase.
You figured, there was one that we thought was the most feasible, was $525,000 of 1.5% over 120 months. And it works out to $56,568 a year for 10 years, no balloon payment. So just under $57,000 a year.
And the tax on that, Charlie?
And that tax impact, I think you figured was 23 cents.
23 cents. Does that answer your question?
It does. It would be that, then of course, in addition to paying the mortgage on the building, there's also, it would be the $16,000.
Added to the budget.
Added, plus one full-time person, which is, you know.
That would have to go forward into our budget for that, yeah.
Yes.
Are there usage?
Could you say your name? I'm sorry, just.
Charlie Bozzello. I'd be interested, are there usage statistics available for the library? I mean, like, how many outstanding current memberships are there? Has there, I'd be interested in how, has there been a change in the number of members in the last five or 10 years?
Libraries, all libraries keep very detailed statistics. Sarah, do you have a couple rough numbers?
Number of registered library patrons, roughly 1,700. Let's see, I think we have about 1,800 items that circulate in the, in the library, kind of off the top of my head. It is listed in the town report, and then it's also available on the state library website. And I'd be happy to get you.
How many books are taken abart from the library on a monthly or annual basis? Any idea? I mean, what's the activity levels?
You give us that every month.
Thousands, 1,500 a month.
So 1,700 current memberships in the library are outstanding. So if my math doesn't fail me, it's about $300 per membership, $500,000 somewhere in that neighborhood, correct? Thank you.
Sherry has a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Sherry. She had a question at some point. Earlier, she had a question.
Okay, sorry. Yes, you had a question?
Yeah, my name's Jenny Angel. But you do things more than just, you know, books.
Yes, yes.
And with the additional space and the potential staff, do you expect to expand some of the offerings? Like, and I've not been in the library, but like, for teenagers, or being next to the school is, I would think, would be more of an opportunity. So have you thought about some of that?
Very much so.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, we, we're hoping we would have a place, the teenagers, young adult section, which we don't now, really.
For them to hang out if they want?
Exactly, right.
So they're not necessarily taking out books, but they're.
Right, and they might.
They might, yeah.
We, right now, have a big DVD collection as well, and audiobooks. And so we could expand those periodicals. So libraries, again, it's the 21st century, and everybody says, why do you need a library? Well, book circulation is up statistically all around the country, as well as other uses for the building. There's crafts, a lot of libraries have maker spaces. So they have things like sewing machines. They have things like welding tools, you know, things like that, that people can create with.
For those of you who haven't been in that building, the third floor is a large meeting space, which would be an enormous benefit to the town. It's just gorgeous. And it's something that we sorely lack in this town. As you can see, all crowded in this large meeting space.
Would spaces like that be available for townspeople to rent out? Like, if they had something going on?
For town events, probably.
We would work with, set, obviously, town, town group, town government groups, definitely. We'd work out some sort of policies, as every library does, working with other groups. One other thing that third floor, in our current library, when we have a program, Alice referenced, having to move furniture out of the children's room, which is typically where we have the activities. And we're limited in space. For every activity, we have people sign up ahead of time, so that we know how many are coming, so we can figure out if we can hold them all. We have a couple times had, if we have any speakers in, if it's in the summertime, on a nice day, we may do that outside. But typically, if we have speakers in, it's over at the booster club. So it's away from the library. The space in the historic school building, not only the individual rooms are larger, so we could have smaller activities, but that whole third floor would lend itself, not only to meetings for groups, but activities for children as they come out of school, after school, right next door, it would be very valuable.
Sherry?
Just to point out, yes, the third floor is beautiful. But we also have a school, which we used to use for meetings, a cafeteria that holds a lot of people. We also have the gymnasium, it's a nice meeting place. So just to point out, it's not like this is the only small meeting place we have in town.
Point well taken, yes.
Because we do have nice meeting places in the town already.
But we have to compete with school activities from occasion. So this would just give us another option.
I agree with you, but I think the cafeteria and stuff is done at once.
Yeah, okay. Yes, oh, sorry, go ahead, Lee.
I just, speaking of, you know, being in the 21st century and expanding, I'm assuming that probably the computer room would be a separate room? And how many are there now? And what might you be doing in the future to expand that part?
We have three or four. We have four computers. We'd like to add that. One big thing that we're lacking now is the space for people to come in and use laptops and tablets. We just don't have enough seating space and table space.
It's a lack of privacy.
A big lack of privacy, being such a small space.
And we looked at one of the rooms on that first floor of the historic school, would very much lend itself to having some dedicated space for computers, also a place for people to use their laptops. Although, the whole building would be, could be accessible to anyone sitting anywhere using a laptop.
Amanda, you had your. I have one more question for the Board of Selectmen. So the, and I, I mean, I, gosh, 1.5% or something like that, that's wow. You know, that's a heck of a mortgage. And for 10 years, 120 months, 10 years. So looking forward for the Board of Selectmen, of course, we never know what the future holds. But I'm just thinking about, for example, you know, do we need any, or are we going to be buying any fire trucks in the next 10 years? I mean, what, what can you foresee, you know, on the horizon? You know, that if we had this, you know, bond that we had to pay off, we'll have an end date. You know, in 10 years, it's not a bad term, you know, at all. A great term, 1%.
Well, one of the things, I understand your point. We do have, and have been, putting aside capital reserves for all of those other expenditures. The fire truck will be a big one, and ultimately, there will be another need for a fire truck. But, you know, we're contributing to their capital reserve. We have in place a capital reserve plan, which needs to be updated, and that projects out 10 years. And so we do set aside funds for those other areas. We've tried very hard not to engage in crisis management, crisis financing, because we have to look to the future. And it's been enormously helpful with our DPW vehicles, with our police vehicles. And, you know, we're just getting started. And we've started contributing to the library, which is going to enable them to use that money now to renovate that building as needed. So the capital reserve program is addressing all of those concerns.
One thing I do want to clarify when you say renovate the building, it is very minor.
Yeah.
The, one of the rooms in the historic school was used for Head Start. So the bathroom, they've got the very low toilet, and they have the sink out in the main part of the room. We would change that, change the layout. Get the sink out of the middle of the room, put it in the bathroom, put a regular-sized toilet. And it's also got a half door, and we put a full door there. The only other thing that would be renovated would be, within that front entryway, build a circulation desk. So that's, when we talk about renovation, that's it.
And library shelving.
And furnishing, yes.
You do need, I can tell you right now, you need the library shelving. You can't just use shelving. You need the specific library shelving, it's different.
And that's one of the issues we have in the current library. The books go, particularly in the main part of the collection, shelf on the bottom, down on the bottom of the floor, and almost up to the ceiling. So for anyone to try to, and anyone with any little mobility issue or discomfort, trying to reach way down or way up is difficult. In addition, the aisle spacing in that area is such that if you're in there with a walker, or if you've got an armful of books, trying to turn around in that aisle is very difficult. And it is not in the current library. It is not handicapped, accessible as far as spacing between aisles. That would be remedied in the new location.
Amanda, you're a Scribner trustee. You might want to address the concerns that the trustees have, or that we have, about the trust fund running out.
Well, I will share what is my opinion. I cannot speak for.
Okay, I understand that.
I am not speaking for the Board of Scribner. My opinion, as I share with the Board of Selectmen and other people, is that the trust is depleting. Its current value, the stock market has been doing very well lately. And its current value is about $105,000. However, as Alice pointed out, when Emma Scribner left her home to the town, when she died in 1936, she left her home and a small trust along with that to support it. And the principal that she left was $40,475,070. Well, don't we wish that were true? Oh, my gosh. There you go, about $41,000. Now, there is a disagreement among the Scribner trustees on whether or not that we can spend that principal, that $41,000. It does appear in every legal ruling I have seen that we cannot, which means that the trust is not worth $105,000. The trust is worth about $65,000. And historically, and I looked into, I got that principal amount from the state archives, thanks to David Ruhl, who pointed me in the right direction. And I got copies, I sent it to Charlie. We had it all on file of what Emma Scribner's probate says of her will and what the principal was that we got from the town God in 1939, or 36. So at any rate, historically, and I've gone back on this about 10 or 12 years, the Scribner trustees spent historically about $10,000 a year from the trust, working, you know, to maintain the building. 1,250 of that every year has been their stipends, which is going into their pocket. Now, they're paying themselves. 250 each, times five, which is $1,250. I have refused the stipend for the, you know, for my term there. So this year, when I say this year, 2019, 1,000 of the 10,000 they put in their pockets, it's 10% of what they're taking from the trust every year, they are paying themselves as a paycheck. In fact, we received a letter from the Attorney General's Office, New Hampshire Attorney General's Office, which does discuss this stipend as being, on the one hand, very legal. But on the other hand, as the Attorney General's Office pointed out, a very, very high percentage of the trust, and asked, Attorney General's Office asked if the Scribners would rethink this amount. They have not. Now, in my opinion, and I'm only speaking as Amanda Loud, I am not speaking in any way, shape, or form for the Scribner Board. In my opinion, as an Ashland taxpayer, from what I know, this trust is depleting, it's depleting rapidly. It is depleting, in my opinion, because of the stipends that have been taken over the years, which has had an extremely detrimental effect upon the trust. It has deprived the trust of earning power. It's not a checking account. This is a dynamic amount of money, and not a static amount of money. So based on what I have discovered in my research of town reports, it's all public information, where I've gathered all of this, while I'm sitting at the town library. In my opinion, the trust will not last much longer, you know. I think we have a few, a few ways of going about this. We can, we can get it to a slow lead, in which case, you know, we try to share some expenses of the Scribner Building with the town. I know that the Scribner trustees, and I put my name on it, mainly just to make everything very public, have tried, are in process of trying to charge the library a $10,000 a year user fee, which of course, is the cost, you know, historically, that the Scribners pay to maintain the building. Keep in mind- Keep in mind, none of that ten thousand, one thousand will go into the pockets of the trustees, because they will take their stipends. So, that's, that's been gone, it's gone to legal. We don't know if the Scriveners have the legal authority to charge that user's fee or not, because the town owns the building, not the Scrivener trustees. The trust will deplete. How much longer will it last? I don't know. You know, if we hit a really good, you know, contraction in the market, if we hit a nice, nice recession of any kind, thing could easily be gone in two to three years, because let's keep in mind, we're not going to zero on this, we're going to forty thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars and seventy cents.
Thank you, Amanda. So, my point is that when that happens, and it will at some point.
It will at some point.
The library is now, now homeless, because the building cannot support it.
Well, that, that becomes the question.
Yeah.
The question is, according to Emma Scrivener's will, that when the, the building is no longer, and there, there comes the legal, the need for legal counsel, when the building can no longer fulfill its duties, or is no longer needed, or something like that, her will says that it needs to be torn down and turned into a park. And there is now the question, if I said, other Scriveners differ on their opinion, if we can spend that forty thousand, four seventy-five, seventy, or if that's going to be used to turn it into a park.
Yep.
You know, if, if it gets down to, to zero, can the town somehow come in and still have the building? Or do the Scriveners?
Right.
Who's, who has authority? So, it becomes very opaque, and, and has been, you know, is looked at by lawyers. There you go.
Right, okay.
Can I ask Tri-County Cap a question?
Sure.
You gave us four options.
Yeah.
Where'd, how'd you come up with those options, or are you able to go longer than a hundred and twenty months?
Those options were negotiated between our CFO and TD Bank, that's our, our lender. And, you know, we, I can't really speak for Randy Pilock, who is our CFO, on that. But, you know, the, the, the thinking was that, offer an option that's, pays it off in a relatively short term, the sixty months, right? And the one, that option with the balloon payment makes it so that the, the, each monthly or yearly payment isn't, you know, a hundred thousand dollars, it's like fifty thousand dollars, right? And then you, at the end of that five-year period, you could either do a bond to cover that balloon payment, or, or refi, you know, at that time. The ten-year kind of makes it a, an even payment. The bank wasn't particularly crazy about the idea of, you know, like a twenty-year mortgage-type arrangement. They obviously would, would prefer that, you know, we find an outright buyer that, you know, gets their own financing, and, and basically, any, any, any revenue that we realize in the sale of that building goes straight to the bank, and pays down our, our notes, you know, our long-term debt.
Yes, Sherry?
Everybody's mentioned the balloon payment. What is the balloon payment? Because you've mentioned all the other numbers except that particular number I've noticed.
Okay, the first, the first option was for a sixty-month term. Let's see, let me come down here. It was a sixty-month term, or five years, fifty-two thousand, five hundred dollars yearly, with a balloon payment of two hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars.
Okay.
The second option was, again, for five years, one point five percent interest, yearly payment of fifty thousand dollars, with a balloon payment of two hundred, almost two hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
Any other questions, comments?
I had a question for Amanda. So, the ten thousand dollars that we're still kind of trying to figure out, is that, is legal for?
Right, if the Scriveners can charge the users fees to the library, yes.
What, how was that figure arrived at?
Well, as I said, historically, you know, if you go back and look at how much the Scriveners have spent from the trust every year, it has been around ten thousand dollars. Some years, it's been twelve or fifteen, other years, it has been eight or nine. But ten is a, is a pretty, you know, that's a, that's a pretty average amount of money that, you know, they spend on heat. And, you know, I can say that part of the roof on the building is going to need to be replaced. We're talking about that for this summer. So, how much is that going to cost, you know, based on having put a roof on my own home, and, and the other, you know, numbers that we non-roofers at the Scrivener table have bounced around, you know, probably about five thousand dollars. Five thousand dollars plus the heating oil. There's, there's, the, the way that the money is invested right now, there's a lot of fees involved, which I, I've tried to get rid of, but it's been outvoted. So, about a thousand dollars is going to be lost to fees. There's a secondary insurance policy that the Scriveners hold for another thousand dollars. They're going to pay that, even though it's insured by the town. And then there's, there's stipends, there's three thousand, and then there'll be a roof, and then there'll be the, the building maintenance issues, and something might break, and, you know, as we, as I asked about how much it would cost, you know, to, to run the big school building, you know? The Scrivener building has, has expenses, which is all, are all the town reports.
The other thing is, once you have a town library, by statute, you must maintain and support, maybe maintains is not the right word, support a town library.
Yes.
We have to have a place in town, by state statute, for a library, it needs a home.
Yeah.
And in this day and age, using somebody's old house just doesn't work any longer. They were meant to be a home.
It has been unremodeled inside. I mean, there's the kitchen and everything, still, yeah.
But it's still, we're still dealing with small rooms from an old house that we cannot, we can't expand. We don't, the Scriveners, we have, in the past, I think at one point, we ventured, could we build onto that building? The answer was no. There's.
It was no from the Scriveners, it wasn't no from an architect or from.
Well, no, but.
I was just making sure we get it clear.
Right. But we have no room to grow, or even to expand our current programs that we have within that building.
Well, even an expansion is expensive. What did Holden spend, over a billion dollars?
Ask Amanda, she was the.
I was president of the Friends, when the Friends of the Library did the expansion, and that was about one and a half million dollars.
Right, right.
And we, we did that all, we, I was not part of the fundraising, I was part of, part of signing all the documents. But I wasn't part of the fundraising. And I think the town, and oh, gosh, I might get the numbers wrong, but I think the town only funded about a quarter of a million, and the rest was all private funding.
Wow, yeah.
And it included, what was it, a half a million, three hundred thousand dollar endowment that went along with that, was part of it, to, to maintain, because buildings need, even brand-new buildings need maintenance. And we have an elevator in that building, which is not without cost.
Right.
Yes, ma'am.
And we're curious.
Yep.
And I have a question. Has anyone pursued the idea of trying to get some grants?
We here are always going to be on the lookout for grants. The couple other times that we've tried for a warrant article, at the same time, we did have, we had applied conditionally on approval of the warrant article for a grant to cover the furnishing, for instance. Furnishing estimate we've had from seventy-seven to seventy-eight thousand dollars.
Yes.
Furnishing and shelving.
Shelving is a major.
So, absolutely, we would look for whatever grants we could find. Finding grants that fund purchasing a building is difficult to find. But anything, anything we would do, we could do to reduce cost of furnishing, whatever, we would look for.
I just would like to state my admiration for the librarians.
Yes.
Yes.
It's a very difficult place to work. I gather they do not have any hot running water?
We do now, they do now.
Really? First time today.
But how long has it been? How many years has it been?
I've only worked there twenty-two years, so before my time.
Wow.
Twenty-two years without hot water.
That's terrible.
I would like to say that Rick Parry noticed that. He is a Scrivener trustee, a trustee of the trust fund. And at, at our meeting that we had last Monday, he noticed that there was no hot water when he was with someone inspecting the furnace. And anyway, went to wash hands and said, realized there was no hot water. And it was his idea that he brought to the board, and we all unanimously said, yes, please do put in some hot water, so.
I'd like to speak personally, not as a member of the PBOs. I have participated in the knitting group with Ann. We have two, two chairs, comfortable chairs to sit in, to knit. Anybody, so Ed and I usually try to get there and, and have those. Everybody else has to sit in, roll out computer chairs, and we're sitting right there. So, if the staff wants to participate, they have to stop, they have to go wait on the customer. The other thing is, and maybe, I, I'm sure many people don't know, a lot of children use it as a safe, quiet place after school, listen. Not even to study, a safe, quiet place to be.
Okay.
They go in the children's room, they might have a cell phone or other electronics. It's a, a safe place for them to be, and some of these kids also will provide some sort of snack, because they don't have a, they have to go home to a, you know, an empty home. So, you see that social side of it.
Yeah.
And these ladies don't talk about it, but I have seen it with my own eyes, Ann, at night, when they said, it's, it's eight o'clock, it's time for you to go yet. So, that, that bothered me, that. But at the same time, they had a place they know. They were secure, and they were warm, and they were dry. Yes, Craig?
Craig, Craig Moore. I'm just wondering who's going to plow it, shovel it, mow the lawn, and do all that stuff, like clean it, clean the inside, and things like that.
They have cleaning staff.
Right now, we, we hire cleaners, and, and we would do that.
So that, yeah, okay.
Well, that would be.
Isn't that it? What about the outside?
Well, you're.
Well, who takes care of the steps now?
The town.
The town.
Yeah. Well, that's what I'm wondering. Are you still, right now, it's privately done.
Correct, yeah. I would assume it would be a discussion with the town, since, since it would be town property at that point.
Other questions, comments? All right, yes?
I guess a, a comment I'd like to make, if I may, that I.
Please.
Should have made earlier on, when we were talking about the price and whatnot. And I don't know how many people in, in the room tonight are familiar with that, the whole renovation project of about ten years ago or so, something like that now. Predates my involvement with Tri-County Committee Action, but through, you know, a combination of some monies from Tri-County CAP, an L-Chip grant, everybody's familiar with the L-Chip?
Yes, we certainly are.
Okay, and, and, and obviously, just borrowing. That project in total, to bring that building to its present-day condition, was about a one-point-two-million-dollar project.
But you bought it for a dollar.
Well, we bought it for one million, two hundred thousand and one dollars.
But, and, and typically, we talked one-point-two million, and you mentioned over a million for the addition of the Holdens' library. That's typically what we're seeing for construction for a small piece of a, of a library, or for a small library.
Right.
And some are going, I saw one recently that was over four million dollars, and it was just a one-story library, it was not fancy.
Anything else? Seeing nothing else, I will close the public hearing, and I thank you all for your attendance.